Thank you everybody. We will start tonight, I want to read out our pledge. We must observe the requirements of the council's commitment to the civility and respect of the nation, that is to treat councillors, employees, members of the public, representatives of party organisations and volunteers with civility and respect for their roles. They have breached that commitment, we will not tolerate it. Do we have any apologies received? I would just say there won't be pasties after the evening's light, instead of giving a dinner, a dinner, a hundred pounds to the bank instead. Do we have any interest in dispensations in regards to such things? There are no dispensations being granted. No instructions given there. Item three, to hear the community fire safety report from what's happening.
Okay, thank you good evening. We really appreciate this opportunity to give you a little bit of a report about what we're doing at the station. A lot of people had a copy of the piece I've put together and I think, I'm not going to read through it, I know there's plenty to be done, but if there are specific points within that piece of paper, then I'd be more than happy to talk about it. Kind of hijacked it a little bit because I wasn't supposed to be here. I was supposed to be up in Essex with a marine firefighting down the group. However, I didn't go today, it's been called off. But Rob was going to be in my place, but I thought, well, two for one. So I'm going to give you a little bit about myself and the station, and my thoughts on the station. And Rob is going to stand up and tell you about what Blue Watch is doing. So we've got four watches at the station, we've got on-call at the station. Each watch has specific roles within the community, little things we call initiatives. And Rob's got a cracking initiative that he's building on at the moment, so it'd be really good to hear from him about it. Before we start, any questions about anything that's going on in Falmouth at the moment?
What can you mean?
Yeah, any. Come on then, listen, listen. So the smoke is all over Falmouth, I think it's really important, I'll give you an update. Rob went up to the site today, I've been up to the site today. Basically, we've got a large area of green waste that's on fire. It's quite a large area and it's not something that we can put out straight away. What we're doing is we'll meet with the Environment Agency tomorrow, so I can assure you that there is going to be plans set and I think, if there is a representative I can speak to tomorrow, just to give you an update, would that be far from it? Yeah, so if I give you an update once we've met with the Environment Agency about our plan, it's going to take some time to be perfectly honest and it's going to take a lot of resources. So, once we get together the Environment Agency, then we should be able to make that plan. And it's obviously as the wind moves around, at the moment it's heading down through Coles Loic. We're going to get a bit of a rest fight, it's going to go a bit more of a, I think it's going to go a bit more northerly towards open fields tomorrow, but we are putting everything together to try and sort that out. Back to the report, anybody who's got anything that they've seen within the report? Good answers. One thing I do want to raise, and I suppose it's me banging the drum about the importance of keeping Falmouth a 24-hour station, is there's a little bit of stats there in the report about where we are and what we do and the shacks that we go on. And I think it's quite important to note, if you look at the night-time calls, that's the largest amount of calls we're getting within Falmouth. Okay, we're going to other places within the county, we're supporting other places in the county, but those calls are a period at night in Falmouth and that's our community. So I'm all there for looking after the community and looking after my own town. I am a station manager that lives in his own town, so it's quite close to my heart that we maintain that. So the calls are coming in, I mean, it's a kiss of death really. I wouldn't be standing here and saying, we haven't had much open house three months. We've had the standard house fires, kitchen fires etcetera, and then suddenly today, we find that we've got quite a live fire as a result of that. But if you have got any questions, then I'll hand it over to Rob, who can tell you what we're up to.
Hi, good evening everybody. Tony Frost, Stapleton, watch manager, Blue Watch, Falmouth. Each watch at the station has a sort of a functional role and we look after a different part of our community. Blue Watch is very much focused on the students, the university and how the students are safely in our town. We had an unfortunate incident about six weeks ago, eight weeks ago, where a student, we had stayed over for the summer, had gone out into town, had a great night out, come home, started to cook and then passed out on that bed. The cooking developed into a kitchen fire. Everybody in the building discharged, went out through, pulled the fire brigade, we turned up at four in the morning. They gave me some great information, I was able to deploy my BA crew in, reading that greatest. They put the door through, she's still asleep, picked her out of bed, took her out and then extinguished the fire. But for us, that is a real classic incident of something that we always talk about. Go out, have a great time, don't come home and start cooking. So that got us thinking, got our cogs turning. We do a little bit of prevention work with the first years when they come and they're in the halls of residence. So we do an emergency evacuation drill, we give them information and we show them a chip pad to scare them a little bit really, and make them think and switch on about fire safety. But what we think's happened is, people move out of their halls of residence, they're here for the second year, they're then here for the third year, and they forget. So we're going to target the second and third years on top of the work of all the different. And going out and finding private sector housing, where students are living and reminding them about the importance of when you do go home. Try and get a takeaway, but come home, have a policy and don't start cooking or something. So we've been out today with Tessa, we've done 37 home fire safety checks this morning before we went into our great big pile of green waste. So we've been with her, she's going out every day for the next two weeks and a crew from the station will go out with her. Each day hopefully shout to committing, visit properties, engage with students, remind them about the importance of being safe, being secure, looking after themselves and their neighbours. And then what we're going to do is we're going to claim all the information because we're not allowed to, if we go to the letting agents, they won't tell us where people live, so we don't know if we're going into a student house or not. So we'll put together the information so we've got a better idea of where the student hubs are in the community, we've got a better, more accurate idea for us, where they are in the community. And then we can just keep a bit of an eye on things when we're going out and about, you know, see what condition the building is, see how the outside is kept, you know, our curtains are shut, and just have a bit of a big brother eye on things, knock on the door from time to time, offer them another home fire safety check, just be a big brother to them, keep an eye on their safety. Hopefully that way we can keep reminding them about stuff, keep reminding that chip to them about being safe, being secure. We won't have that classic incident. This really wasn't for the protection system, as it should have done, it wasn't for having really good damage to the house. That's been awful, I was, I think we were 10 minutes away from being a real tragedy for it. So it's not something we should be lost, lost over. So we'll be happy to work. Very passionate by Martin says about meeting students and living in, and making sure that we do everything we can. That's our function on Blue and that's what we'll be doing for the time coming.
Thank you very much. Just thinking, House Conick and Pearce are part of the Old Hill Tenants Association and we're talking about having a pack to give students. Or do you see like a factory or something?
Yes, we've done something similar to that before, so during Covid when we couldn't get around and speak to students and interact with them one-on-one as such, we put together a welcome pack. So before they came to halls of residence, we went round, we put this pack together and it contained everything from NHS information, like using the NHS responsibly, so, you know, go and talk to a pharmacist before going to a GP, that sort of, we were direct use of the NHS. We've put coastguard information, beach information, we've got everything that we found to be useful in this pack, we hung it on their doors. So when they turned up, there's a pack for each room or each hall of residence.
Were there people who looked at it and went into the students?
It certainly worked and dragged up the old information of something we had in that and then put it into the news.
Any questions for councillor?
Yeah, not too much of a question, but Martin mentioned earlier about 24-hour covered fire station. I think we've got a fair number of boys fires just to read it before they start. I live very close to a fire station, they go past me in Rockford, see if we like to go past at night. It's not always, you know, but that side of it, I see, Rob, I just wanted to thank you for the day you had, the other day on the Sunday where everybody turned up. It was a brilliant day, people come up to me and said, why can I do that every month? I said, because they're busy. But it was extremely well supported, I thought it was a great day. And you'll always get support from the town councils, where I believe on 24-hour cover, yeah, the same that we should always be aware of, university, the docks, the town itself, definitely need 24-hour coverage.
And from that as well, so we raised £4,300 for Georgia's Voice and for Land Down charities, but what was really good to see was all the other moving services paying, which really shows the collaboration that's going on between services and how we work together. So yeah, it was a great day and we thoroughly enjoyed it. We really enjoyed seeing our community coming to us and trying to show off what we've got.
It's great to see you guys at the Pride as well.
Yeah, 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 that's Tom, Tom Whitehead.
Great, councillor Spargier?
Well, it sounds like there aren't any sort of help that you would like from letting agents. Is that just that they want to give you names of people or properties or are they able to tell you that these properties are let to students? I don't understand that being a problem with their names.
Yeah, I'm led to believe, I think it's a GDPR issue that you can't be giving out information like that, so I'm not too sure. I think it'd be worthwhile doing a little bit more digging to see if we could potentially get some concrete information.
I hope there was some scope potentially in letting agreements, but when they summon up the set of students for a house, they actually have calls that says, we are happy for our information to be given to the veteran.
Quite possibly, we're going to speak to the university as well because obviously when people get in contact with a university because they want to attend, I'm expecting there to be a list of approved sort of letting agents, approved sort of homes that students can go to. So potentially we could get something, some direction from the university, we could go that way too.
Yeah, I was going to say maybe there's a potential for landlords of student properties to actually voluntarily list their properties with you, not just letting names. So I don't know, the best way.
We think, from our conversations we're having, we think it's targeting the landlords to get the overalls on, targeting the landlords is the best way, because they want their property to be safe and secure and adapted. So we think that would be the best way. So that'll take time, but initially we're doing the door-to-door stuff with Tessa and engaging with the actual students and then reminding them. Ultimately, it should be getting the landlords on board, the university on board to find a solution for the issue.
Thanks all. Thank you all, thank you all for doing, keep them safe. Yeah. We've got to save them. Thanks guys. Councillor Solley, would you like to give them a counter to jolt?
Sure. He's had a few chills.
Yeah. I did have a problem.
Thank you everyone. Next item, item four, to take as bread and confirms accurate minutes of meetings held on the 3rd of June 2024. Those who set those to true accurate record. Councillor Currie, for those in favour of acceptance. Town Mayor's report, this is promoting as circulated, we're trying to save the timing of agendas, so councillor I just submitted for reports to you. If there are any questions, please ask them. Sorry, councillor Spargier?
I just wanted to thank the local residents.
Oh, come on. So that's Mayor Farmer there. Deputy Mayor's report noted, any questions for councillor Currie? Other questions, we have none. Please report, please report this one. Community network panel, our community network. Action may start there, the VSF presentation from the last one, I think the Kennedy area partnership, it is on 20th June, let's from those. I think councillor Dean Evans or councillor Edwards might have attended those, they want to add anything to the report. Anything to add councillors?
Not really, I was there, not to have any work as a councillor. I've talked a lot about community action days and the main and climate stuff, we threw a lot of ideas about, did big workshops, it was pretty good. Definitely associated that perhaps we actually start being a bit more action-based, I'd say. Not anything else?
I think the country's working well, it's working better than the neck of it. Because of the bigger volume, not one geographically active, but more interesting area. And we've got a present day, so related government, which is why I'm actually, again, we go over that. We have longer issues, we should, this time of year, I think we should be seeing results.
That's not very positive, thank you for your time. Next is common councillor reports, councillor Gowan sent us apologies against the public matter. I myself have only been in the world for two weeks, so I don't have much to say. I've only managed those, it's good. Councillor Solley, do you want to say, did you report?
Yeah, just letting you know, I've been paying attention reading the last two issue weeks, recording that in radio, it's very important, I can't say, that's not personal, so I'm probably going to tell that now. I was coming back today, as the fire officer said regarding that south, can be from Bangal Valley Farm. Yeah, there's all the compost heaps on fire. They don't know how they start here, we're not sure how they start here, it's certainly not by fire in the south. And chatting about it, he said environment coming up this afternoon, speaking about it and what steps they can take with the fire service, as he mentioned, to put the fire out. You know, he said that if you start going with a digger, just ignite it, you know, it's just a smoldering heap, so I trust in the environment services and the fire service on that one. Not a lot going on just at the base at the moment, but 490 ago I was called out to name Geitha Terrace Residence Meeting, that's in New Dock, regarding the height of the trees, they're very concerned, these trees are growing at the top of the hedge and they're very, very high. And if you get high winds, the way you're going to go is right then crashing into houses. So I managed to secure a meeting this Wednesday with a tree officer to see what can be done to lock them at the top so it reduces the height of the tree. As you will know, when they're in full leaf, they act like a sail, you know, and it will give them more weight to push them over. So now the leaves are falling, it should be quite dangerous, but we'll see the tree officers on Wednesday. Just to finish off, the one-way system in case it arose, you see there's several dead of it there, we had a few problems, a few got in the wrong way, stuff like this, and it has now settled out a bit, so I'm hoping it will stay that way.
I'm not sure it's a big problem, just to keep the coverage. Councillor Joe?
Yes, finding all the trees, we had a tree come down and fall closer, so something wrong here this afternoon, so I gave them a reminder if you have, I reckon at five o'clock, that will happen, they used to cut up this morning because they're a bit of a storm there, so there's an issue there. Highways issues, we've finally done improvements around some areas, schools, a few little walkout sessions, people can go and pass over the area, a few people were bothering me about it, didn't say we were consulting, but they're paying time to respond to that. That's some of the camps stuck in my area. Call councillors, councillor Red, I've got a speech here, everyone, I'm pretty happy that you're hoping to join me, my central party, because I'm a member, instead of you and my adjutant.
Yes, 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 in answer to your question.
Well, there was a few motions cancelled, but I would go to that, I was a good person, but I don't mind, it's been pretty quiet.
Any questions for the councillors? No, just to shake, we won. Committee reports. Proceed and consider the reports of the following committees. Finance and general purpose committee, hold on.
Same here.
Same here. Do you have a proposal, second? Do you have a proposal?
Yeah.
Yeah, second. Councillor Spargier, all those in favour? Okay. Grounds facilities and environment action committee.
Proposals set out a path for a really wonderful one, which will be in the path for election.
Thank you, Chris. Do you have a second there? Councillor Currie? All those in favour? Cultural services and leisure committee.
Councillor Spargier, please.
Councillor Spargier, seconded? Second councillor Currie, all those in favour? Okay. Bounty and licensing committee.
I'm sorry.
Seconded? Councillor Spargier, all those in favour? Thank you everybody. Item 12, Penwares by-election. Councillors Conick and Pearce were successful in the recent by-election and have joined council. Welcome aboard councillors Conick and Pearce, good seeing you. Did you want to say anything your own? I'm saying your own.
It's the first time we have said it.
That's fine. Apparently councillor Red is elected for council, probably a division member. Moving on to... Shall we do the chairs, can you sit under this?
Yep.
Sorry. Entirely empty, I was going to raise it, it's entirely empty, you want to do it for service.
Just, mostly around the table now, I've had a very challenging few months for lots of different reasons, so in the best interest of the council being functional, I'm taking myself off committees because I need to be at home to be doing the time stuff at the moment, I don't want that to be down, so I'll still stay in my seat, but I'm going to pull myself from this committee, so I open up those spaces on cultural services and my own, so.
Thank you councillor. You have our full support, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to vote on current vacancies, committees? Rather neatly, Mr Mayor, you have a nomination for each vacancy. Ah, thank you, nice meeting. So the nomination... Councillor Mr Green, so you might want to look through the list. Okay, we have finance and general purposes committee, there is one seat, councillor Pearce is nominated for that seat. We have grounds, facilities and environment, there are two seats, councillors Pearce and Conick are nominated for those seats. Cultural services has two seats, councillors Conick and Pearce are nominated for those seats. Staffing committee, sorry? Sorry, apologies. Grounds facilities, Pearce and Robinson.
Sorry, councillor Conick, having been councillor, obviously on grounds and facilities.
Thank you councillor. Staffing committee, there is one seat and councillor Conick is proposed with that. Oh, shall we on this person, the champion's upwards? So first is finance, general purpose committee, the proposal is that councillor Pearce take up that seat. Do we have a nominee for councillor Robinson, seconded councillor Edwards, all those in favour?
Where have we moved on?
Sorry?
We've moved on to...
We're on item 12. Yes, current vacancies in the town council are?
Yeah, the vacant champion, the...
Or two vacant champions upwards? Yeah. Yeah, there's no other nominations, which is going up.
Four, we've four vice chair, we're grounds, facilities and environment.
Do you have a second there councillor Red?
This one.
Thank you. Okay, we're doing finance, general purpose at the moment. We have one nomination, councillor Pearce. We have a nominee, a proposal, a second there, all those in favour? Carry on. Grounds facilities and environment action.
Sorry. Before we move off finance and general...
Yes.
We've lost the vice chair, so we've got an idea of putting our votes on, if we, we vote on who's going to be the vice chair.
Slightly further down the item, yeah, slightly further down the item.
Yeah, oh, was it?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's after the champions, we have to vote it.
Vice chair.
Vice chair of the grounds and services and environment action, nothing about that on the page.
No, no.
I'm with you, I'm with you.
Thank you. So at the moment, we've just agreed that councillor Pearce joins the financial purposes committee, we've got one, two, three, four, five, we're all committee seats to that account, then you're on to your champions, then you're on to your vice chairs. We're on item 12, Penwares by-election, there's a list of committee seats we're going to get.
Now it's cheap now, different page.
So FIP, councillor Pearce has been voted to take the seat. Next is grounds, facilities and environmental action committee, there are two seats, by councillors Conick and Robinson proposed, seconded. Councillor Currie, all those in favour? Carry on, thank you. Next is cultural services and leisure committee.
So point of order, every vote is selecting the committees where councillors want to do it, and just to clarify, councillor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're leaving to council decisions.
Yes.
Cultural services and leisure committee, two seats, councillors Conick and Pearce top proposed.
Seconded, whatever.
Seconded councillor...
See that's more than... Three things.
All those in favour? That's a good reality, but it's in my... Next is staffing committee, one seat, there is obviously a training requirement as well, so that takes a handful of training responsibility. So we have a proposal, councillor Conick, councillor Robinson, seconded councillor Edwards, all those in favour? Carry on. Do vice chairs, the chairs. Shall we do vice chairs now? Makes sense, no. Okay, the meeting was spread. The next is the vice chair role for both grounds, facilities, environments and staffing committee. We will take grounds, facilities and environment first. We have Danny Conick proposed, councillor Dean Evans proposed, seconded by councillor Spargier. So is there a move for a second there for councillor Conick? So is there a second there for councillor Conick?
I'll be on to speak, I don't want to speak, I'm qualified. No? Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Seconded. Yes, councillor Spargier.
Just to clarify, the vice chair has been voted for high back committee only?
No, it's a committee, it's a council decision tonight, it's a full council, so it's all members.
Right. I'm not sure that's the way we vote in the past, is it?
Yeah, you normally vote, you usually have a full meeting, and then you vote on chairs and vice chairs and...
Oh, sorry. Sorry, it's normally, as in last time.
Councillor Spargier is right, the council's former practice was to leave these appointments to each committee, in recent times the council will make those calls. So taking all the votes in favour of councillor Evans, please raise your hand. So hand up, councillor.
Yeah.
What's the hand up?
This is for... Hand up.
This is for Dean to be vice chair.
Oh, Ben.
Of grounds, grounds, facilities, of councillor and Danny.
I'm going to start again, is that... Yeah, okay, start again. This is for the vice chair role for grounds, facilities and environment, we have two nominees, councillor Pearce and councillor Conick and councillor Evans. We are voting now for if you want councillor Evans to be vice chair. Dean Evans. We're voting now on councillor Dean Evans to be vice chair of grounds, facilities, all those in favour? And all those in favour of councillor Pearce?
Nobody!
Pardon, councillor Conick. So to the same form, then we have a substantive motion, I'm taking, voting will be the same. No one wants to change their votes, the substantive motion is councillor Conick to be vice chair of committee. Now for vice chair of staffing committee. Councillor Robinson?
I propose councillor Jeffrey Evans.
Do you have a second there? Seconded. Do we have any other nominations? All those are favour of councillor Jeffrey Evans, who nominated vice chair. Thank you. We now need to move on to the vacant champions roles, we have food, security, health and safety, and school university years on that one. I have councillor Conick proposed for food security, councillor Robinson for health and safety, and councillor Covidy for school university years. Do we have any other nominations? I propose we vote those as a block, are they proposed and seconded?
Yep.
All those in favour?
Alright.
Thank you. Councillor Spargier.
Sorry, just for the, you used the word security to screw justice on the right again.
Mine's been screwed around as long as we're in security, like Byron, that's all very official.
I always thought there's a difference between justice and security, so maybe you can clarify what it is.
I'd take it it's the same thing, it's the same role, that's approximately, it's a new champion, we started, what the title might be. Well said.
Justice and security, dude.
We've won the matches. Next is item 13. And there's one last thing to do, that's the outside body, the vice, that's previously counted. So we have representatives to sit on the sits and advice, councillor Burton stood down, it's obviously an outside body, we have a proposal of councillor Pearce to sit on that, did anybody else like to nominate themselves? Can we have a proposal and seconded for councillor Pearce, please? All those in favour? Thank you. It's up there. Just maybe. Okay, next is item 13, Pride Pledge for National Education Guidance, did you want to say something about this?
Yes.
Do you want to say anything? Yeah, five minutes. Will you say?
I have a gift.
Where do you want me? Just where yours are, mine. And this is filming, so where was best for the camera?
Fantastic. So, the ask from Cornwall Pride, as the relationships build across all the form with all of our partners whilst we're delivering our events as Cornwall Pride and connecting with all marginalised communities alongside of our funders and your other partners is to sign up to our Pride Pledge. You've got it in front of you, but I will just read through the most basic elements of it, and that's as a partner, support of Cornwall Pride, you pledge your love to the community. And group or business will be safe welcoming and friendly to LGBTQ plus and marginalised members, staff, volunteers and customers. We will visibly support and promote justice for LGBTQ plus and marginalised people, have clear reporting mechanisms for harassment, discrimination, challenge homophobic, transphobic, biphobic, misogynistic, racist and homophobic behaviour. We will ensure all members, volunteers, staff are trained in understanding their experiences of LGBTQ plus and marginalised people and how to be a proactive ally. Now, the reason why this is only reporting from a pride perspective is to look at the wider UK in the discourse and the interruption to social cohesion which has happened through the riots across the rest of the UK. And actually, it's a really important step for Cornwall to take and lead on, and actually this is the first council that we're having this conversation with. And actually, not only as part of the Pride Pledge, what we're asking to allow your council to work better potentially on this is even to look at creating an inclusion committee to have conversations around food and different marginalised people, to connect and ensure that there is no disruption to social cohesion. One example, we're going to introduce is Scam, where your inclusion committee could look at.
Hello, everyone. So I'm Scam, I'm a genderqueer trans person, and I live in Penrith. I am a theatre designer and I'm co-director of Blue Cornwall, and we run events and we create spaces for marginalised people, including workshops, retreat days, drag shows, which may be sort of the competitive, or you will be going to. So we create spaces for people to really celebrate and be themselves in this constituency. So today, I want to speak to the council with some deep concerns about the trend of trans children and young people in our community, and extend a plea for help to each and every one of you. The concerns regard the recent draft of the Transgender Education Guidance for schools in England, and also the publication of the CAS report, and the suspension of lifesaving puberty blockers that risk endangering the safety and wellbeing of trans youth in Cornwall, and also across the UK. So these are children and young people who deserve nothing more than to learn, grow and be themselves without fear, without shame and without barriers to their wellbeing. First, I will speak upon the schools guidance issued in 2023. So two thirds of trans people have faced transphobic alien, which contribute to a painful cycle of abstinence and poor mental health. And instead of helping change this grim reality, the guidance currently stands for worse. It encourages to ignore the fundamental humanity of trans students, and the policies exclude trans pupils from facilities, they ban them from sports, or they allow them to be openly misgendered and send a clear message that they are different and that they do not belong. Imagine being a child who is simply trying to exist, only to be told that those in power and the even basic rights are out of reach for you. I know many teachers want to help, and many work and already do, and they support trans people in their schools, and it was in a survey by Saks, two thirds of teachers said that they would support children who came to the sport, but this guidance threatens to tie their hands. It compels them to do things that they know will harm the very students that they care for, it excludes students from safe spaces, it prevents them from joining sports. And these are not just policies, they are rejections over and over again that shatter a young person's sense of belonging. And second, I will address the 2024 CAS report and healthcare changes. The CAS report, while claiming to improve services, has left many of us feeling exceptionally betrayed. It means misconceptions that gender-friendly care somehow presents young, prevent young people from exploring their identity, when in fact it does the exact opposite. When the trans people are supported in who they are, they are allowed to flourish, to dream and to live without fear. The report implies that being trans may be a result of trauma or neurodivergence. It claims to erase our experiences, tell our identities are a problem to be solved rather than something beautiful and real. For this report, they claim to help trans people, the voices of trans youth have been largely ignored in all 400 pages. There are charities like Mermaid who have actually listened to trans people, and it's their guidance we should be listening to, and especially listening to trans youth. So following that, the NHS England moved forward without racing, waiting for these voices, they made drastic changes to the support available for trans youth, removing the routine prescription of puberty blockers, an intervention that can save lives by giving young people time and space they need. It's a cruel step backwards. Puberty blockers are not dangerous, what is dangerous is forcing a child through irreversible changes, and what they need is time to figure out who they are. I do not claim to speak for all trans people, but I do know what it felt like to be a child, confused, afraid and desperately wishing for acceptance. I remember what it felt like to wonder if I could just be myself, and whether anyone would care enough to see me and really to see me. I wish I could tell trans children today that things are different, that they do not have to fear or hide who they are, and that in our schools and in our healthcare system, in our communities, they will find adults who care enough to protect them, to listen to them and to let them be who they are. But right now, I cannot tell them that, and that breaks my heart. I'm asking you, as members of our local council, to please use your voice and to stand up for trans youth in our community, please speak out against the schools guidance and the CAS report, write to the Secretary of State for Education and the Secretary of State for Health and Social Care, let them know that Cornwall stands with all children, and that we will not allow trans children to be left behind, to be denied safety, to be silenced or to be erased. Trans youth deserve so much more, they deserve to be loved, they deserve to be respected and supported, and I hope with your support and your writing to the MPs that we can make this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, that's very powerful. Okay, can you give me? So it's hoping, a couple of weeks ago, we got the highest level of LGBTQ plus population in Cornwall, 11%. So this is very, very apt. We have two issues here, as I see it, we have Pride Pledge, the National Education Guidance, which is something we as a council can adopt, assign to, and we also have a request from Cornwall Pride, the council supports its representation to the Secretary of State for Education, so we have those two items, and I'll take them separately. First one is, do we as a council wish to adopt the Pride Pledge? If you want to go to the three tenants of that, again, I'll have to do so. Councillor Evans, do you have a question?
Thank you, Bill. As I say, it is due to issues there, and we have a code conduct, and I think it is from that basis, it is a broker that we review, revise and review that conduct to include those three products. Now, we thought the way you all were marching, dark direction, to review and revise these to ensure, and then those ones are taken into consideration.
Thank you, councillor Rowes. Councillor Evans.
Yeah, obviously for me, certainly 100% support, I'm with you, 100%, with the rich, powerful and passionate, and make you share, and that's it, obviously very difficult. It's internal gender, so I would probably say that. Lots of lived experience in my life with this, with children, people around me, even have the absolute privilege of signing the paperwork to transfer the person's name from one to another, and that's real one of those days, so this is a no brainer for me, we have to care for everybody in our community, and to be of a really high level for young people, particularly in our town, that don't identify with their gender, and I think we can do anything we can to help people come full safe, so it's an absolute no brainer.
Thank you. Councillor Evans.
I think everyone should have respect for everybody, no matter what they believe, no matter what they believe in yourself. I'm just a little bit worried when you start talking about blockers and everything, though I don't know enough about them to make a decision on that. I'm quite happy to support Pride, and, you know, but I'm just that bit bad with the blockers and everything for the younger children, I don't know enough about that, whether I should be supporting or not, and I would rather know more about that before I make that decision.
That's fair, thank you. Councillor Evans.
I completely understand what you're saying, but for me, myself, if I don't understand and know, I trust those that do know and have done the research, and do you understand what that looks like, it's not my lived experience, I don't think they have that lived experience, that I'm just have that understanding, so I'm absolutely completely willing to trust the lived experience of young people that tell me that's difficult, you know, and my understanding is that if you just change your mind, you can help them, right? It's not permanent, you're not talking about a permanent change, it just buys some time for that young person, so, while I completely respect what you're saying, I would say if you don't know and understand, I'd be sad to ask the people that do, and I would trust these people to know.
Thank you, councillor Rowes. Councillor Robinson.
Yeah, technically as other people are, I know one of the requests was for us to set up an inclusion committee, I kind of feel that all our committees should be inclusive, but in terms of this, I wondered, rather than setting up another committee, whether we could include this inclusion specifically in terms of reference for one of our committees, rather than set up another standalone committee, might sit well with CSM, I say, but I think
We already have some of these by communities. We already have some mentions of trying to get to the community inclusion etc, definitely always on the agenda with the library and the gallery and the Miss Pavilion, we just try and get on our agenda, and we perhaps make more of that on that committee.
Thanks.
Maybe a bit of project as well.
Yeah, I mean, setting up another committee isn't a legitimate term, it's something that's certainly a definite term. We have the fact that... Councillor Evans?
I wouldn't really fall for all these.
Oh, happy. I think it's beyond a reasonable standard, particularly, I mean, it's organisation, wasn't it? So I think perhaps Cultural Services or MNG are maybe the better place for it. The proposal has quarters of life on the agenda, this is vice council, adopt the Pride Pledge. So, that's always one, so I think... Councillor Evans?
I propose that we ask the club to review and revise our code conduct, including the spot process, such as having a separate pledge.
Is that in addition to, or instead of?
Instead of, yeah.
So anyone else have something? Well, at the moment, it's going to be the motions, someone's seconded.
The only thing I would say about that is the code conduct only holds us accountable in this room, like, of council business, so it's all going to be a much more organisational approach to it, so I'd be worried about restricting its impact if it was just in the code conduct, I'd absolutely agree that we should addition, add some stuff into it, but I think that if, what's been asked of us here goes way beyond our behaviour in this room, right, it goes into all the work and action we do out there in the community, so maybe in a way we do that in addition to, but not instead of.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, right, I mean, the code conduct applies to us, I think the pledge is a pledge by us as an organisation, in all operations and everything we do, that we will support the inclusion of LGBTQ plus people. So I think putting on the code conduct will have a certain amount of benefit, I think we need science that has an organisation, and that's what we've been asked to do. Councillor Evans.
Yeah, I'm, sorry to interrupt your show, I'm still confused on whether this kind of thing that we support, there's stuff about the blockers and everything.
That's part two.
That's part two.
Yeah, right, yeah, just discuss now, are we, are we as an organisation going to pledge to support this minority of people within our... of people within our town? That's the crux of it. So are we going to go, Council Spile?
I think we should go back to roots and I think the advantage of the suggestions that sort of normalises, perhaps it within our own sort of pledge, certainly there already.
I'm completely supportive of Council Evans' comment, but I would like to see the place the proposal we got, I just didn't come on the code. Your Members' Code of Conduct is a county-wide one, adopted from a national one. So if you change that, you are diverting from that county standard. There's implications in that for the monitoring officer, obviously we're operating a separate code then to the rest of the councils in Derry and Cornwall. Actually, your Members' Code of Conduct covers all of this stuff anyway, you know, all this stuff about equality, disability, respect, all that, that's in your code anyway. This is about the organisational practices and it's similar to a number of other pledges you've adopted around other matters. My recommendation to you is you don't provar onto your code conduct, but you look at organisational pledge.
Council Evans, would you hand me that? Okay, I propose from the chair that we as a council, as an organisation, adopt the Pride Pledge. Second, Council Evans. All those in favour? Council Evans, thank you everybody, thank you for your support. Part two, Cornwall Pride has also requested that this council supports its representations to the Secretary of State for Education regarding the proposed transgender education guidance for schools in England and college, with Cornwall Pride's correspondence to all councils. So this is related specifically to the new educational guidance. Any questions? You have to answer questions if they come up.
The education now is separate to puberty blockers.
Yeah, so the educational guidance is a separate document to the CAS report. The CAS report is related to gender affirming care and the educational guidance is related to schools.
Thank you. So we are solely debating the educational reforms. Yep? Do we have any questions? Do we have a proposer? Council Evans, second there, Council Spile. All those in favour? Thank you. That's carried, thanks for the lean. It's fascinating, what would you? Matthew, we'll have to use comments and discuss how to still point. Thank you, thanks guys.
Sorry.
So did you notice?
I wanted to do a quick presentation of this, as you guys have seen, as you saw the bits of this that got sent around in my study tour. So that is in fact a turn to go now. Back in May, I went to visit Yarra County Council as part of the National Education and Labour Council Tours, but they visit different councils, big ones around the county. This is just outside, that country, not really, so this is just outside Bristol. It's a population size very similar to Falmouth, quite a lot bigger in there, just quite a lot of urban sprawl and rather than having a town centre like here, there's lots of centres, like there's lots around. But the focus of that visit was on youth services. It was really fascinating to me because they put so much of their budget into youth services. I think it was from memory for a third or something like that, of 25% of their budget into it. And of that, they used that then to get match funding, that's why I did the number increases from County now, because there's another conversation that we had about how Cornwall Council funding reserves and what they're spending now on a moment. But what was really, really great is how inventive they were with it. So they have this amazing thing, this funny bus thing, it looked like a transit van, basically, but they'd cut it out, put in some sofas, they had some decks for users, they had an Xbox and it was basically a mobile youth pub that they would take out into parts of the community that were hard to reach, or if there was a problem area somewhere, they'd go and reach there. They also had another amazing people, the Ardeno Cafe, again, huge investment from the Somerset, I think it was Somerset County Council as well as their town, to build basically, not a youth centre, but basically like a club bar cafe for young people. So it was all designed by younger people and you walk inside there, it's run by youth workers and they have like DJ decks, stage, cafe vibes, football outside, basketball upstairs, like a hundred person cinema screen. It was really something special. That did come in at just over a million pounds for them to build that, but I think the council themselves built in about third of that and it took us many years to deliver it, but I just thought it made me think about how creative you can be with budgets and the ways you address different youth activities in your town. So obviously you all know we've got Escape Park open now, has a really successful head down there beginning in September. On site that day were the police and I had a lot of conversations with them. And those anti-social behaviours massively not since Escape Park opened up, because there's now a focal point for the built community, there's this intergenerational role model that's going on down there and there is an opening and a bad meeting with those companies to be kind of made better quite quickly. So it made me really think about as a council what our priorities are. Obviously, we've inherited a lot of stuff because the council's the way it has been for X amount of years and so we have the art gallery, we have the maintenance etcetera, etcetera. What we could do creatively moving forward. So obviously, we've got amazing stuff, this is going down in the art gallery, some amazing stuff up there, very interesting, there's a little bit of embrace up. I think there's always more we could do. So I came back from that saying, actually, we'd be great to pledge a bit more money towards youth services, whatever that may look like in the future. I know actually my absence, the SIL money's been allocated now, but to ask you guys to reconsider thinking about putting a pot aside in the next round of SIL or the next budget that we could dedicate towards youth services. I know we've seen the centre have plans to try and build additional sort of wing on up there, which is purely owned, run by the young people with supervision, there's some that they have ownership, I know we've got a basketball court, we still want to deliver up the top there. I think there's lots of really creative things we could do if we allocate a little bit more and obviously a bit like with the last conversation, we're not the experts necessarily, but we're really lucky to have experts in this up in our town. So let's go to them and say, actually, what do young people really want and need? That's what we do with the escape park, we delivered it, they really love it, they really love it. So let's give ourselves a little bit of space to be able to be creative about how we tackle youth services moving forward. And that was my last comment.
Thank you.
I love your question. It's been a long time ago now, it was right though, it was a lovely time, very busy.
Is the proposal will be allocated some funding into draft budget for next year?
Well, yeah, potentially draft budget, I mean, I'm just an FNGP, so I don't profess to be an expert in where we are in terms of what will come in up next year. But I know obviously the last few years we've allocated money towards getting the escape park built, which is great, so obviously that's not going to be on the draft budget for this one year, is my understanding about the budget. I assume at some point we'll have more SIL coming down the road from all the various departments that come around Falmouth, so I mean, I'm not really too frustrated about where it comes from, but I just like to see it being a big priority for us. And that's not what we think, let's find out what they want and try and deliver it back for them. So yes, if you want me to be specific, in the budget, some happen, please.
Thank you, Council Evans.
Sorry, before Council Evans comes in, I don't think you need to be specific tonight around that, obviously your budget setting process is all your aspiration for next year, so that will be very easy to mix. If you want the results to do that, that's fine. If not, put it in there and it gets chewed up through that draft budget process.
And that's fine, I'm happy for it to go and be discussed at FNGP, you guys are the experts in that area, I'd really like to go on the table, please.
Thank you, Council Evans.
Yeah, I thought it was a great thought, thank you to Cassidy for doing that work. And I thought the whole way that it was set out and focused on young people and what they wanted and it was very easy to read, it was very easy to see what the council was providing, which I don't think we do in the same way, because we do provide a lot of young people. But I think we probably could do more and I'd be more than happy to see that go into the budget deliverations and more focus on youth services.
Council Evans?
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. My only question would be, Kirsty, if this money goes into the youth service, I think we need something like a mobile service to go around the town. I've got my Yiddish, you've seen it, I've got car niche shoes at Swan Vale, a lot of antisocial behaviour, a group of the kids, shoplifting, drug abuse and you know this. So I think something that should go around the town and support all the four divisions and I'd be fully supportive of that.
Yeah, that's what I originally proposed. Paul was talking to the Yiddish Centre, for them, absolutely aspirationally, but it's not just about us providing some money for that, obviously it needs to be served and that then has ongoing costs, so that we just have to consider that, if that's something we wanted to pursue, that then comes with additional costs, not just providing the unit. I think the unit was just on sixty grand and was all cut out. Obviously, you've then got ongoing maintenance and the staff, you have to have at least two trained youth workers in it when it's out and about. So yeah, that would be the dream for me, right, go to where the young people are. I agree, but again, we're not, you can deliver in the core youth service in families, so back to the experts, let's maybe have that conversation with Yiddish about what they think is really desirable and we're able to achieve financially between us.
Thank you. Council Evans?
In an ideal world, we can throw money at everything. I read a report, a report was a very good report and we do need to do something to get the kids in our town, but we've got to look at the budget very carefully this year and see where we are when we set the budget and there's a little bit of wiggle room, then yeah, then fine. But at the moment, I can't commit to anything without knowing what has happened to the budget for next year. People are struggling now, everybody is struggling. I support the idea, but I want to see where we are with the budget before I commit myself to everything.
Thank you, Council Evans.
I saw the original proposal was for that, I was actually going to point out that there was something slightly current, it's the distance, like if you are in Swan Vale, even where I live, which is closer, it's still a bit of, you know, a bit far for the people. So anything that spreads that sort of, rather than having orders when I'm really focusing on it also. I abstract repeatedly like that there's a lot less than even when I was growing up in Valverde, something to apply, you know, like the bowling, there was crazy on Lisa, do you remember that? And also Chitham Castle's gone and that's a question, but you know, when you're sort of trying to come up with things, places to go, places to do, I'm not surprised that there is a bit of misdirected energy and we can get that as a priority, but also some outside of Yiddish Centre as well, that's where you go, yeah.
Thank you, Council Evans.
I think Tandor, the Yiddish do, it's about the same size as one of half the preset, but we've got so much money into youth there. But I think we've got the cart before the horse, because from what I've said, and I'm seeing a policy for youth provision, and I think that's the way we should be going to look at, and it's not just Yiddish Centre, they do amazing for that, but we have got Tandor in this, we've got Bosso, we've got the Martial Arts Centre in Bosso, we have the Skys and all the uniform sections, we have the Livesave group and we, you know, Bosso, I'm a boy, and we have very little there, apart from the Martial Arts Centre, we've got the bridges. And I think we need a policy that we look at and say, right, what is the best way? Perhaps we need to bring all these segments together, actually discuss what is the best way of dealing with and actually, you know, we could do more, we should do more, but I don't think just saying, oh, buy a bus, you know, I think that's definitely the bus before the drive. First of all, we haven't got money and I don't think it's appropriate to start allocating money towards next year's budget. We don't have any decisions from this committee into the budget as a set deal, you know, it's , I suspect it's going to be a very difficult year and we have to look at all the other things, but we need a proper plan and I think if you concentrate it out on that and perhaps the rest of the year or next year, come back with a proper plan and then fund that.
Thank you, Council Evans.
I'd say I agree with Council Evans and obviously I think it's a serious, right, we need to plan for the future and budget for the future of the youth in town. I would say that we've also got facilities that we need to sort of use for that. So we've got Princess Building, there's nothing to stop the Princess Building, having occasional, you know, regular events there for the youth of that area. We've even got the Air Fitness Suite, which doesn't get used a lot and we have a launch cafe, so we need to be looking at what we have already and how we can maximize the use of that, sort of encourage the youth to do something rather than that. Obviously, the art gallery's already to use a lot, because the first point came to the youth service, but we have facilities already, so we need to maximize our use of them. So that way, our money isn't being spent on buying things and creating buildings, it's actually going into them direct.
Thank you. Should remind, Councils, that we do have a town council strategic plan, which has some provision within it, so you might want to remind yourselves of that.
Thank you.
Say what I'm going to say. Council, sorry? Yes? Council Evans?
Yeah, I was just going to say, carry on from Council Evans' part, we'll definitely be useful to sort of carry out a review of cultural services carry out, on the youth services that we provide currently and see where there's gaps that we, you know, already filled and then we can perhaps create sort of projects. They really need to review what we've got.
Council Evans?
I actually do like the idea about the policy and stuff and you say it's already in the strategic plan, it's like this is a nice like group stuff, ways to work with. And I wasn't suggesting that we absolutely replicate what's happening in Yiddish, it was just very interesting to me how they tried different things in different areas and they went around those different tiny parks and some deprived areas in the Great Acre and they gave all of them the same amount of energy, which is really wonderful. Just to let you all know that the organisation I run for, Cornwall Gorge Sex Board, we actually have Children and Young People Alliance, which basically includes all the charities in the whole of Cornwall, the work with children and young people. So if you want any expert opinion on this area of work, that shall go to you and I'm planning to put you in touch with my colleague there. So I wanted, based on hearing the thing that we said, if it's appropriate to Council of Commons and that maybe I propose to send this to FNGP consideration at budget setting time, so to think about what we're actually providing at the time, rather than asking for a specific sum, which say, can we please make sure it's on the agenda for consideration on this budget setting, is that appropriate?
Yeah, and also we could undertake the revision of the strategic plan and the provision aspect of that. So we could take that piece of work, we have part of the proposal as well, so relative to that actual money, we can have internal systems first.
Mark, you have to write a few lines that make sense. So I did also like what Council Spile said about utilizing what we've got, we've got all the spaces and think we had, we're saying we're going with thirty grand, we had thirty grand, we could probably do a lot with that money, utilizing like spaces in your area, in your area, you know, we made money go quite a long way, we're creative about it. So if Mark doesn't mind, doesn't mind writing a couple of lines, what the proposal should look like, I would be very pleased with that.
You're asked, yeah?
Yep, so basically what you're doing is you're looking at your draft budget in the round, so you're not making any recommendations tonight in regard to youth provision for next year, but that will be part of what I should debate. You're looking to coordinate a more defined policy from your strategic plan in regard to how the council provides youth provision going forward and part of that is reviewing your existing provision.
I'm happy with that, so I'm pleased that you're very much.
First, Jarraburn, second, Council Evans. All those in favour of that proposal? Thank you, that's a really good discussion, thank you.
Thank you for your patience and whichever.
Okay, item fifteen, co-option policy.
Yeah, the recent humorous election got me thinking, obviously it was contested, so co-option wasn't an issue. We've got a process for co-option, but it's not enshrined anywhere, so it would be useful to have a policy for co-option, should we need it in the future. So if members are unhappy to approve that, please.
I propose we do so, second there, Council Jill, those in favour? Co-op, an official co-op policy, council. So when there's an election, you co-opt people on business contestable. Everyone listening? Everyone listening? Yeah, we're good. Item sixteen. To note minutes from Maritime Line Forum, are they noted, everybody? Item seventeen, Safe for Cornwall, to note, to save for Cornwall, have your safe survey engagement plan. Is that noted?
And, and those members that want to respond, please do.
Uh, next we have Fair Trade. Thank you very much.
That's a nice of yourself.
Yeah, it's fine. Well, thank you, thank you for the opportunity to, 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 um, present my report. I'm lucky to have stood all, um, all three of my ideas. Um, just wanted to say, uh, just to, it's in the report, we've celebrated thirty years of that trade, um, and we're not going to happen in that time, because a lot of it has to be done. Um, so as part of the celebrations, we, you know, had a lot more events than we normally hold, um, eight so far, and we've got two more because we're doing Green Ivy Week, and we've also been asked to, um, pass, and then that should be that for this year. Um, I, I think event is usually the Fair Trade Coffee Morning, which was on the twenty first of, uh, September. Weather wasn't great, and we'll be happy to. So we didn't have as many people as we normally have, but, um, I think it was a good morning and, um, what a morning and afternoon it was. Um, and in a way, the lower numbers enabled us to do some more of that activity. So we felt this was quite effective event, even though the number's small. Um, and it was good, you know, we did some children's activities, children have a good time, yeah, I was, yeah, I was joined in as well, and it was good fun. And just to mention that we had a, a fair trade film that people seemed to, um, really enjoy, and we did quiz and we filmed afterwards, and, uh, got a high score. So imagination.
That's, that's something.
Um, the other big event that we've done, I'll just say a little bit about it because it's connected to something that happened every year. We did, during Christmas week, we did a Melbourne pack. It was just one fair trade night with a bag with some information. Um, and we decided to do that, having had very successful, um, city, city hall packs, which the town council funded, part of that, it was very successful. And because of that, we decided to do something on a small scale, with just something that we could interact with the new students coming in. And it went very well, we did, we made up a hundred and sixteen packs, and it was funded by a donation of three hundred pounds from the Truro Fair Trade Club. We used to always purchase everything from there, the hub is closed now, and they donate to us, so we feel like that's a good use of the money. Um, and, um, again, it was a good opportunity, it was an opportunity for us to meet the new students and have a chat with them. There, it was a busy, two days, there was one dependent, and then, and then someone with family, and the students, it was a busy time with students, until we did get the opportunity to have a chat with them, so that was really good. The other thing I just want to say a little bit about, um, is we had a fair trade conference in Exeter, and we had five speakers there, all very good speakers, and one speaker was a Kenyan tea farmer, and he couldn't say enough good things about the UK, how the UK supports fair trade. Because as a trainer, he sees the benefits, which he's part of a cooperative, of the sales in the UK, which then generates the premium, that allows the cooperatives there to make choices about how that money can be used in the community. And it's all done in, you know, it's done in a very representative way. So it was really good to hear firsthand from him just how the support in the UK, um, is helping the proprietors and the small scale farms. So that's really my, that's what I want to say tonight, my little appeal is in the book of the year. I put here, uh, you know, what we, we as a fair trade group all the time are trying to do is share information about fair trade, share what, you know, needs to be done in order for, to support the farmers, particularly with all the impact of climate change and so on. And it was really interesting to hear all going to announce how they are, they are working with, with the client, they're working with, they're using all methods that are actually working. Um, so it was, it was very interesting to hear all of that. Um, yeah, but I just wanted to say, this, and this is, when I say our goal, this is fair trade, but it's our goal as a fair trade group. Our goal is more, is more than people just being aware, it's about them making an active choice to support, supporting fair trade farmers and workers across fifty-eight countries, wherever possible, to ensure they can earn a fair wage. And that's, that's, there's a campaign to be going up in a number of years now for a living wage, you know, there are many farmers in, in the developing world who don't even earn a living wage. And so, yeah, so that's the message, and well, this is my invitation, is please, will you support fair trade whenever you get the opportunity? And if you get the opportunity to speak, um, on behalf of fair trade, and, you know, particularly about the trading agreements and so on, you all have that bit of power that you don't have. So yeah, that's my thing. Um, so I think that's about it really, and then just to say a big thank you to the mayor for coming up to attend on the twenty-first, and to the finance committee for, you know, giving us that amount of money to enable us to, you know, build on a relationship we already have with the students. So it's really good working with universities. Any questions?
Thank you. Just say, you know, film saw it, it really was truly inspirational, wasn't it? Because these farmers are now working cooperatively, and they're getting a fair price of their goods, they're sending their children to school, they're building electricity, they're villagers, water pumps, it's just making a huge difference to people's lives, just by buying a lot of land and some of those things.
And also it's very interesting to see how they're farming around the edge of the rainforest, so they're not, acting on the rainforest, so they're, and so the rainforests are benefiting, the wildlife is benefiting, because they're all working together. So that was a big word, I think, in that film, was together, and the same for us, people all working together, to give, to let them have a better future.
Great, thank you. Uh, any questions? No? Thank you so much, thank you for your due. We now have a motion by Council Sorely. Council, if you want to present this yourself, before we get out.
Yes, yes, thanks very much. I've written it down, so I won't forget anything. Uh, the reason why I brought this motion as a call cancel, is that I strongly believe that full council meeting should be set at seven o'clock start, and certainly not at six o'clock. Here are my reasons why it should be seven and not six. Now that I'm retired, I can come and go as I please, within reason, and be able to attend most meetings throughout the day and evenings. But when I was working, driving Loris to Seaton over a river, there would be no way after finishing work as late as five thirty, that I could get back to Falmouth in time for a six o'clock start. Have you considered other councillors who may have full-time day jobs and in and exile Falmouth, who would also struggle to get back to Falmouth in time for a six o'clock start? And last but not least, the general public who may wish to attend a full council meeting, have you considered then regarding the time to a full council meetings? For example, they could come down at seven o'clock, thinking it was a seven o'clock meeting, and find out that it started an hour ago, or arrive at six o'clock and they have to hang around for an hour. By standardizing the start time of seven o'clock, makes it easy for everyone to remember, councillors and public alike. As I said at the beginning, it is easy for me when I retire, but I'm thinking about others, including the public, who would struggle with a six o'clock start time. Please support this motion by putting others first, and not what your personal agendas may be. Thank you.
Thank you, Castle Sorely. Uh, just to reset, this is just for full council meetings, which often start seven o'clock, because we have committee meetings previous to it, so it's not for all committees.
There's a fact that changes.
Castle, Castle say.
Okay, I do appreciate the, the considering, um, working. I, I finish at five thirty, fortunately it's in Falmouth, for that more explain to anyone who's in my committee sometime, why I'm a bit reckless, getting there for six. Um, my, um, concern would be about the officers that have to stay on for the extra hour, um, and how that impacts their time potentially. Um, me, I can do six because I'm in town, I'm happy to go on the, um, because I prefer to finish early, you see, I might make that time. Um, but, um, yeah, it was about the officers I was wanting to raise as a question, whether it's a good idea to have it delayed to seven.
Uh, Council Eva.
Yeah, um, I understand where Castle Sorely's coming from, but we all have different reasons why we want certain times. We voted on this as a council within the last six months, and we voted to go from seven o'clock to six o'clock, mainly because of the officers hanging around, and we got, they worked all day, and then they're hanging around to come to a meeting at seven. But I'm diabetic, and I started, well, I had taken the ban, I had taken your commission to bring that, because I knew that.
To fair trade.
And anyone who was diabetic, you should have had to stop the drop, it's not funny. And, um, I needed to eat, and so if I could come at six o'clock and be home, I would be home by now, and I could have that properly. And I think that everyone has different reasons. I believe we voted on this within six weeks, six months, quite happy to vote on it again, which shouldn't be, the protocol says that anything within six months shouldn't be turned into a cancer.
I think Clark can respond to that. I, I think, yeah, Council, Council is, is quite right, um, council decision was taken within six months, your standing words do not allow you to break those back. Um, I took a pragmatic view, there was a couple of days left within that six month period, I thought if it didn't come to this council meeting, you know, you'd be considering it in December. So it was a pragmatic view, but actually technically you're right, it, it was within that six month period.
Uh, Castle, please.
Um, I'm happy to go with the majority here, to be honest with you. Um, for me personally, and, and early starts better, because I can get home in time to settle Bella, Bella will not be asleep when I get back, so if I'm back late, then that means even later for her to go to sleep, she won't go to sleep in front of the house. So that's just me personally, but I also work until five, but I work locally, so I can get here. So I'm, if everybody feels that it's better for them to go later, I'm absolutely happy to suck that up, but I don't really mind either way, but whatever the majority, it's best for the majority is fine with me.
Yeah, I think everyone's then, then you need to break. Castle Evans.
Yeah, I think Castle Sorely makes a strong point about consistency. I think from the public's point of view, the seven o'clock start, the seven o'clock tonight, we make six o'clock the next one, I remember, but from the consistency point of view, having a seven o'clock start, I think that's the way we should be doing it.
Thank you. Castle Jill.
Yeah, I second the motion, I've been on the council a while now, I think it's a good time to ask, and I appreciate that younger members of the council have a lot to do. I mean, I'm self-employed, I can pick and choose, and I do mush around quite a lot of the game, by six and then for seven. But when I, I have looked at all the councils in Cornwall, fourteen, ten, that did start at seven o'clock, I mean, some late actually, but I'll go with the flow. I mean, it's the consistency, Castle Evans, Castle Sorely, so I think just, because I know members come in here at, when we have the old six o'clock start, I've seen members, they're in this room now, come here at seven. We've lost an hour, just enough, I forgot that, because if it's at seven, then you go to seven. And there's not many full council meetings, which I think is another debate, but I mean, the few we have, how many is it, four now here?
Yeah, four.
I think just the four, perhaps we should keep it at seven.
Thank you. Just, um, making ready as a financial implication, because we would have paid officers in addition in time for the seven o'clock start decision, we know how there is well. Um, Council Spah.
Um, yeah, I'm not sure if that, so, that's coming, yeah, applies, because, like, last week, we had two meetings on the Monday, two meetings on the Wednesday, one started at six, one started at seven, they want a full council, but they were seven o'clock starts, and it helps with the efficiency from our point of view, in terms of getting as many meetings in fewer days. And so as long as we make sure that when we have a full council meeting starting at seven, we have another meeting before, at least our efficiency is kept to a maximum level. And, you know, the system of having two meetings on the same evening, despite which are meetings they are, is, is a way forward as well, obviously, and it's a very good way to end it. So I, I think, talking about seven o'clock, and then saying, well, you know, we're wasting that hour potentially, I can very rarely remember an occasion where we've had a full council meeting that hasn't had a meeting before, it goes for the last seven years. So I think, you know, it's a no brainer, but, you know, it's consistency for the purpose one for this.
Okay, so the proposal is that.
Can I come out just a minute?
Yeah, please do.
Yeah, um, I, I, when I joined the council, I knew exactly what roughly the times would be. You know, I, I always can remember, I mean, that's Jeffrey Adams' time, it was seven o'clock for council. You know, if it was six o'clock, I think myself, I can't, I can't make that, that I can't get back from work on time, and I'm talking about working people now, you know? So this is my main argument, is that I think it should be standardized at seven o'clock, full council, full council, you say, there's only four, four or five a year, is it, at the most? So, so we know exactly where we are, and it's full council meeting at seven o'clock, and also the public knows well.
Thank you, Castle.
At seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, is that your proposal, Council Sorely?
Yes.
Do we have a second there? Castle Jill. All those in favour of full council meetings starting at six P M with, um. With an advisory that we schedule meetings for six o'clock anyway, so we don't waste that hour.
You have to give a motion, and the motion says something, yeah.
No, yeah, this meeting always, the full council always starts at seven, but there should be an understanding that we've always run a meeting before that.
But I think what they're saying is the process is you take the motion as presented.
Okay. Okay, motion as presented, all those in favour?
Yeah, I'll be careful.
Thank you, Castle Sorely. Town management, please.
Yeah, Dr. Mrs. Ollie, for tonight, his report is as presented, um, any questions can over-trial this for.
Do we have any questions for our part?
He's switched and did it, I don't know if I have.
Sorry, also? Uh, Town Clark, of course, part one.
Uh, part one of these, there, can we, there's three, there's three sections to that, can we treat them separately, where you can discuss each one's, um, the.
Yeah, yeah, that's my intention. Yeah, so the first one there is Cornwall Council's Framework for Leisure Activity twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty-four, so that's the consultation that I circulated to councillors with, with the link, uh, that was from Cornwall Council's Let's Talk. Um, Cornwall Council has presented a ten-year framework for leisure activity, is challenged by underfunding. Okay, can I just?
Yeah, I can, on my hearing, I've handled it a simple, so, thank you. I'll get that.
Cool. So how much did you get, how much did you get this time? Oh, sorry, yeah. Uh, so Cornwall Council's Framework for Leisure Activity twenty twenty-four to twenty thirty-four is a consultation on the framework. Um, Cornwall Council have made the point that it's challenged by underfunding of leisure nationally, and has a set of aging facilities. The framework is a place-based approach to facility assessment. Um, there are a couple of things here, and I'll pick out the easier one first, and that's the, uh, approach around sports pitches, um, green recreational space, uh, I think that's, that's a positive, uh, take in there. Um, I think we previously made some recommendations around, um, developer, development, developers' contributions, and on the role for town and parish council might be taken forward in any of those contributions. Um, I don't think they've covered that particular one, the leisure strategy, so we will likely make some representations on that if councillors agree. Um, the other issue that we are disappointed around is the, um, swimming, um, provision. Um, obviously, the, the last, uh, leisure strategy that Cornwall Council prepared, um, Had a lack of provision or a lack of justification for pools. Um, that saw the closure of ships and castles and enabled Cornwall Council to make a number, a number of decisions countywide around swimming provision. Um, Cornwall Council recognised to us that that was flawed and that this latest iteration would pick up some of those issues. Um, we don't think it's picked up those issues particularly well. Um, and we were hoping there would be more justification for swimming in Falmouth in that strategy. Uh, because that would assist us in our work with Pen Dennis Leisure, and Chris is here tonight from Pen Dennis Leisure. We were hoping that that would assist us more in our external funding being going forward. And actually maintaining the site in being for its meanwhile uses. So I think we're going to make a set of representations through that. Uh, Matthew for Pen Dennis Leisure has given me a set of detailed notes around those two things. Um, and it, I think we would be looking for that strategy to make more of a justification for what we know we need in Falmouth in terms of swimming provision. I might ask Chris, anything else in terms of that?
Please, Dave, please, Chris.
No, we're still filming, Mike, yes.
Thank you for the word. Uh, yeah, there, there is a list of things that we need some clarification on. And we've been very, very keen to work with town council in putting together a response, uh, which obviously is to the benefit of people. Um, certain number of things which obviously Mark and you got from Matthew.
Yes.
Um, there are a number of bases on which these, which strategies it has been produced. And what we need to delve from Cornwall Council is, uh, the reports and the structures that have been put together. To, um, to produce the strategy or the framework. There's a planning tool that's used across the U K or across England at least, which, I know Cornwall isn't part of England, but. But those strategies are not believed to work in rural communities, so well, that's one of our concerns. And so we don't think that the tools can be used, it's necessarily ideal for us in Cornwall and ideal for us in Falmouth. And within the surrounding villages by the coast, you know, half of our population is, is in the water and that doesn't, that doesn't help. There's a drive-time analysis in that, uh, the, uh, the report assumes that everyone should be within twenty metres of a swimming pool, sorry, twenty miles. Twenty minutes, twenty minutes of swimming pool. We are not within twenty minutes of a swimming pool here, not a, a public facility, we're not within twenty minutes of Carmore. But most of Falmouth, and we're not within twenty minutes of Truroe, and certainly not in a rush hour. So the demographics would show that we don't actually qualify for that. The report has come up with a latent demand in Falmouth for one hundred and forty-four square metres of pool area. Which is just under three lengths of a twenty-five metre pool. So again, we need to challenge that because we don't believe that's correct. And again, we wonder on what information they've based that, that result, what was the data? Was it just Falmouth? Was it actually our wider area, I know we're in Falmouth now, but, uh, I think we need to show our wider area, Falmouth, Pendrin, and the surrounding villages. Some fifty to sixty thousand people live there, which is something in the region of ten percent of the whole of Call. And yet we don't have a swimming facility, we don't have a pool, a public pool. So those areas, delving into how the report's been produced, whether it's relevant to our area. And whether it's actually included, the demographics of the people who would use a pool in Falmouth. Uh, it is relevant to our response, and so we need quite, we need, we're going to need to go back with a number of questions to establish. What's been used so we can challenge, challenge the data, challenge the output, and challenge the need for a pool in Falmouth.
What can we do as councillors, Chris?
I think we need to work together as we are, um, and come up with a whole host of questions. I think your power is greater than ours by far. We can ask for something, but we won't get it, I guess, or we don't, whereas I'm, I'm hoping the Falmouth Council will be able to get. Uh, data and information so that we can, we can actually establish and look at the, look at the maths and the numbers ourselves. And work out whether it's a true representation, whether it's just the tool that's working for us. Or whether maybe if we incorporated other data, that it would give us a different result. Um, as, as Mark rightly said, unfortunately, the report does highlight the fact there isn't any local money. Local, when I say local, I mean in terms of Cornwall Council, there, there is nothing in the budget to produce a new pool for anybody. Um, which is, you know, unfortunate from where we are because we're the, the, the largest conurbation that doesn't have pools. So we would have to rely on external funding, government funding, when levelling up through the number, maybe gets replaced or. You know, when there's some other opportunity, maybe in two or three years' time as well. But we will need the support of the county as well as the town to actually drive that through.
So, so what you're saying is tempered that consultation response?
I'm saying, yeah, we all need to have enough of it. Um, yes, we all need to work together, we need to be inclusive. Um, and we've got Cornwall councillors here, town councillors here and so on, so, you know, we, but we need to drive it in all areas. So that when we get to the stage that we can deliver a pool, that we have full support for the government funding.
Thank you, um, so before, before you ring members in, let us know what, what the councilman wants to do tonight then. Is, is delegate or task me with having that conversation with Matthew and Chris from Pen Dennis Leisure. And making that response along those lines, challenging that data. So the votes, Mark, we just. You've got some.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, that's, that's something that I would do on your behalf anyway, it, it helps if I go around and do that. Uh, Councilor Eva.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, but I think you should include the chair of Pen Dennis Leisure as well in that. I believe that if we're going to work as a team, there's got to be a councillor and to try not just to understand, Mark, you're happy to do it for us. You know, the reason we have chairs and vice chairs are to help you out. And I certainly think we need the knowledge of Matthew and Chris as well. So I would suggest yourself and Emily.
Yep, so you, you delegate to the clerk in consultation with the chair of the team. But where is Councilor Jill? Assuming the chair agrees up for that.
Yeah, I fully support what Chris is saying, but I would, I would also push for Chris, Chris and Matthew. Sorry, I'm wrong, Chris and Matthew to go on all the network parishes, there's a number of them. And get support as well, because as I was saying, there's fifty, sixty thousand R Q network to go around, all the, all the official members. We all supported you doing it, but we got it, to the town, so I think we need to get them to the question and back us up as well. So you all come in and all the, say the same thing, because the data is completely flawed.
Yep. Councilor Spardon.
Uh, it, it could well be my misunderstanding how these things work, when I read this report, it sounded, so it was policy, isn't it? Then you have to fill out a survey to, to say if you agree with that policy. And it was very hard to fill out because I knew what they were trying to get me to say. And it all sounds like it makes sense that we try and, you know, spend our money where we need to and consolidate our stuff into economic clubs. I can't remember all the wording, but they were trying to trick you into agreeing to something I fundamentally didn't agree with. And I didn't get enough chance to just opt in to say, oh, we need pool. And so I, I think we should also be querying that, that as a, that was my assessment, as an unprofessional survey we done. Um, but I felt that we should also object to any findings they come from that survey potentially. Because it looked like a masterclass in trying to get beyond sequence.
You go further with it, I'm not in council.
Because I was waiting for the meeting when they asked for a pool. Um, and I think we need to object to that, and I don't know if it, it should be through suggesting a boycott or whatever, but basically if people are going in and knowing it's being gained by, I knew it was being gained. But they still ended up probably giving them the answers they wanted to, and we query the whole, whole of that aspect.
You're right, and ultimately, you know, this, this needs to be a framework that will enable us to achieve what we want to achieve. To evidence what Falmouth's need is, so that, that needs to be the response. Councilor Evans.
Yeah, thank you, um, the document actually says there's no justification for the pool. And if that goes into policy, there is no chance of getting a kind of funding. First thing funders will do is look at policy, it says there's no justification, you can voice your time. But I, I think every councillor here has got an opinion on this, and I'd like to give a sedate by which you will accept our views. To actually build in into the response, and it's not just the swimming, it's a big part of that swimming pool. But other sports are not mentioned, off-road cycling is not mentioned, we've got a track over at the school, we've got the track on Councilor Jill's land, we've got the pump track. But sometimes, you know, that needs to be developed, and, and those sports need to be brought in. We've got a skate park, but not every, not every community's got a skate park, but it's not mentioned in that policy. So those leisure activities are not included as well. And I'm sure there's lots of other leisure activities that people feel strongly about that need to be brought in. And I think, you know, if you give us a date perhaps that we can respond on you.
Cornwall Council, sorry, sorry, I was going to say, Cornwall Council have done that, um, they, they've said they're not sponsored by the twenty, or the one October. So yeah, by, by all means, if individual councillors want to let me know their views, and Councilor Evans is quite right, this is more than just about swimming. This is about, you know, this is the leisure framework, so it's all of that. So all of those shortfalls in your wards or the need in your ward, let, let us have that and we'll make a, you know, a composite response. Thank you, uh, Councilor Evans.
Um, just want to check, are you able to deliver a freestyle response, and don't use, not to use the form of hell?
I think my intention is to write to.
Freestyle, yeah, because I was just thinking, if that's the case, then yeah, that's definitely a good idea.
Because our response is likely to be quite challenging about some of that missing information.
Yeah, well, and our side of the world going, doing survey ourselves, yeah, we're sure we're good.
So I draw this to a conclusion now, I think, um, there's a proposal that we respond with partnership between ourselves and Pen Dennis Leisure. And perhaps the service should be involved in that.
I think you're probably getting that response to me in consultation with the chair of the committee and Pen Dennis Leisure.
That's what I said, wasn't it?
It is exactly what you said.
Uh, I propose we do that, seconded, all those in favour? Thank you. Lachance there.
Right, the second one is Pendennis, Pedland Car Park. Um, you have created a glitch in the matrix, councillors. There, there is an extent decision to resurface the car park at Pendennis Pedland. And to use silver money to do that. Um, your facilities manager reported to Grounds Facilities Committee that the quote for that work was in excess of the budget. And suggested a, an alternative quote which was a, an environmentally better option as well as that. However, that committee resolved not to support that quote. So what that leaves on the table is a decision to tarmac that area, and there is an overspend now in doing so. So my recommendation here is that you suspend your standing orders, you revisit that decision from Grounds Facilities. And you go with that quote, which is environmentally more sensitive, it's within your budget. The health and safety need for those works exists, so it's works that we would be, as I say, we recommend, it's work we'd be doing as your officer team anyway.
And if, if these works aren't taken, what then would be the car park closing?
Um, the health and safety reason for all the works exists, so, so an option would be to close that, uh, car park. But that's not an option we want to be looking at.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Ormondson.
Um, I'm happy to propose that we suspend standing orders and accept a quote for the environment. And I have to say, the, the car park is in a dire state. And it is used by a lot of people in Falmouth, and especially elderly people like to go up there. It's somewhere that's accessible and the people can, can go and have a cup of coffee, have a cup of tea, watch the waves. And I do think that health and safety aspect is quite important for those people.
Thank you, but yeah, it's, it's a piece of land that we own now, there is a health and safety aspect to it, so we can't walk away from it. We've got the budget allocated to do the works, uh, the tarmacings over above that budget. So we either do the more cost-effective option, or we close it, and those are our two options. Councilor Evans.
Um, I beg to understand the, the, the way the clerk has brought this in. Um, but it's not the only option, um, the Grounds Facilities Committee rejected the method of resurfacing. Uh, with the view that the car park could be repaired using crushstone, a proper repair would bring it back into use. And that would be a lot cheaper than the money that has been set, set aside, money for which we've got better uses, quite frankly. You know, when we talked about youth provision, we had concerns about toilets, uh, there's, there's a, there's the, um, road that's sleeping, there's also a few matters on that money. And I think we could better spend on that, I believe that that car park could be repaired for a bit at a lower cost. And we haven't had an opportunity to discuss what that bit, twice we've actually asked for officers to come back with that costume. And it's been denied us. Um, but I think, again, it's the cart before the horse, because we haven't got an overall plan for the headlands. Do we in five, six years' time, do we want that car park in the same manner as it is? And if we spent all that money with a new surface, are we, is that going to bias our decisions on what we do with that car park? My aspirations for the headland would be to be more like a country park where cars are limited going in there. But we've got more provision for cycling and walking, and perhaps we should, we should look behind the big picnic area rather than a big car park. So I think it's premature to actually resurface it in that way, and I think we should, so my proposal is that we ask for a quotation for repair. For the existing car park with crushstone.
Thank you, Councilor Evans, Councilor Perry.
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to say that we during the grounds facilities decided to not use that surfacing material. We didn't decide to not surface it because that's already been decided. Um, and I don't believe we decided to look at other materials. That was discussed, but it wasn't voted on.
No.
And I was, and Councilor Ormondson's proposal to suspend them.
Councilor Jill.
Yeah, I attended that meeting, I'm sorry, I couldn't open it with you, but that motion was lost to spend that thirty thousand. On the assumption that we, they were looking at more cost-efficient ways of doing it. So we don't want to go out for fifty thousand, but I think we need to discuss this again to get some more, dig up some more detail in regards to a cost effect like Councilor Evans has said. Perhaps repair, because money is tight, you know, you could definitely resurface it, cheap and thirty thousand just repair. And in the future, there may be our strategy for that head and they change. I think otherwise you're committing yourself to using cars. And in the future, perhaps we may not have the bomb car park for a car, it may just keep top one, which is then has to be maintained by Cornwall Council, I believe.
Councilor Spardon.
So this proposal, when it was proposed to Grounds Facilities, didn't have a guarantee applying to it. We didn't know what sort of guarantee was going to be offered, and no one came up with any figure.
I don't really want to read these discussions at the, that.
Well, just to remind you, it's that we actually were trying to make a decision without the information you need to make a decision. We were being asked to spend money without a guarantee and without any ongoing maintenance costs given to us for that particular service that's being proposed. Equally, we didn't have any understanding of what the costs of just maintaining what we've got it. And that should be the basis of any decision, knowing what our minimum costs are. As has been said, you know, there's plenty of other things to spend money on, there's plenty of money to be spent on youth rather than worrying about car parks. The car park needs to be functioning, but it doesn't need to have thousands and thousands of pounds spent on it. Equally, we're at the time of year where probably the use isn't going to be so quite so bad for the next few months. It buys us a little bit of time, but we should know how much it costs to maintain what we've got. And when we do that calculation, we don't do it on the basis of what we've done to repair it so far, because that is blatantly wrong. It is badly maintained. We were told that it had been twice treated since we'd taken ownership. And when three of us went there, we saw that the actual attempt to maintain it was actually well off the mark as to what should have been done. So it should be positive, how can we maintain, repair and maintain as it is? And then when you look at the thirty-six thousand that was quoted, you've got something to sort of gauge against, whether you want to spend thirty-six thousand or whatever. And you need to have a guarantee on how long that's going to last, and you need to know what ongoing maintenance that is. Because it's not an unmaintainable, you know, it's not maintenance free.
Thank you, I mean, health and safety is. Thank you. I mean, health and safety issue has been identified. So I'm not comfortable with us as a council waiting months and months, not saying what issues it'd be with making that.
Well, you mentioned it, we should close it then.
Is that a proposal?
Okay, yeah, we can make that proposal. But we close it until the decision is drawn. But it's not a case of we don't want to resurface the car. We want it done properly and sensibly in terms of its cost in relation to all the other costs that the council are looking at.
Understood. Thank you. Councillor Sorkin?
Yeah, if you remember at that meeting, which we saw, we brought up about the guarantee to me to spend thirty, thirty-five thousand pounds on any project, whether it's a car park, something else. If you remember what happened on the pump track, we was given a guarantee which was pretty worthless really by the contractor. So when you're spending that sort of money, you've got to have a cast by guarantee on how long it lasts. You know, you've got to have this when you're spending this. We're not talking about eight, five grand.
So we spent thirty thousand on pump track, there's no guarantee?
Sorry?
We spent thirty thousand.
We did, we did. But we had, if you remember, the councillor is a listener, we had up it, but I think it was like six months. But he actually upped it in the end. So like you say, when you're spending big money, you know, everybody here, buy your stuff, it's big money, you know, play your joy, play your aim.
What guarantee?
You want a guarantee?
The guarantee did we get for the pump track?
Sorry?
What guarantee did we get for the pump track?
The guarantee on the maintenance of it, of the tarmac.
Right.
Right? And that's what I'm saying now.
Yeah.
Is that when you're spending vast monies of public, sums of public money? You've got to have a guarantee from the contractor. It's going to be done by a contractor. And all the guarantees are for, so it's coming back in twelve months' time, it needs redoing, all the guarantees.
Understood. Thank you. Councillor Evans?
Yeah, I think all the councillors have shared here, it's off, that's for sure. That's been a car park for as long as I can remember. I've been in Falmouth for sixty-eight years. Okay, you need that car park. It's an open road car park which is always used. There's never enough room to park anywhere else. We've got more vans out there selling stuff, there's parking spaces on the ground. So you need that piece of car park. I do understand that if we move forward and we get service with time and support of, okay, just got to be some sort of guarantee on sort of it. Well, you're spending, as people say, you're spending a certain amount of money. And I do believe that this is going to come from the SIL and not from our budget. And that's for safety reasons, this has been deemed unsafe. So if we use the SIL money for something, it's going to make something safe. To me, that makes a lot of sense. Okay? But I do believe that whoever, the principle of it, we should move forward and surface it. But in the contract, we should look at how they guarantee on what the work is done.
Okay. Councillor Plowton?
I want to just say that a question around the SIL, whether there's a time constraint and having that time constraint. Has previously anyone spent SIL?
This is the town council element.
So it's just open, so there's no immediate?
No. This is our SIL reserve.
Okay.
Do you have a proposal to shut the car park?
Well, hang on, let me see. You've got a motion from councillor Robinson, supported by councillor Claggett, to suspend standing orders and to revisit that quote from Enviro Pain. You've got a suggested amendment from councillor Dean Evans to see other quotes, there's no second there. You've got a suggested amendment from councillor Spargo that you shut the car park until a matter resolved, there's no second there.
Councillor Robinson?
Yeah, so could I just say that we're talking about maintenance, everything needs maintaining. There's no guarantee that anything we do will not be maintenance. This building needs maintenance. The idea that we don't go ahead and repair what we need to repair because it might be repairing again in the future just sounds to me a bit weird, to be honest.
That was a previous approach as well.
I think that our officers do a very good job. They've come to us, they've explained the situation, they've got the quote, they've done the due diligence. I just think this needs doing. I just don't see the problem here. Why it becomes such an issue.
Okay, thank you. Is there any going to add anything different or should we move to the... Councillor, you go.
I just want to say, here to Robinson, I'm not saying don't go ahead of it if we don't get that guarantee. What I'm trying to say is, when we go forward with it, hopefully we will, then hopefully there's something in there that says we'll give you a guarantee of so long. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying that you need a cast by guarantee that there's going to be maintenance free. It's not going to be, nor is the skate park, nor is anywhere else. You know, we can just do it.
Okay. All these points, is it new information or is it just going over the steps down?
Yeah, I think the officer did a good job. He didn't do his due diligence because he didn't come back with a guarantee. So we need something to come back for a guarantee before we get any support from them.
Thank you, councillor Joe. Councillor Evans?
Well, I just, you know, again, it's Robinson, because if the car park hasn't been maintained, that is the problem. It needs to be maintained, it needs to be repaired. It doesn't need a new surface.
Thank you. Councillor Spargo?
I'd like to withdraw the proposal to close the car park and change that to, if there are areas that need to be, then part of it can be closed off if necessary. But this isn't about trying to find a maintenance-free solution. It's just that we need to know how much maintenance is likely to be needed in the future on anything we do now.
Thank you. We only have one proposal that's been seconded. So that's what we will be voting on, councillor Robinson's motion.
I'll second it.
I think councillor Evans has accepted it. I'll second it.
Which one are you seconding?
Councillor Evans is.
So you find a more cost-effective solution, just to repair it?
To repair it, yes.
And it is with crushstone.
I'm assuming you want a guarantee for that as well.
So if councillors recall when Andy, your facilities manager, reported this to Grounds and Facilities, what he said was he didn't feel that was an effective option because it was still throwing stones up and was still getting those complaints about vehicle damage. Councillor Spargo? Plus the black, our cleansing contractor refuses to go in there at the moment.
Right, this is the last one we're going to vote on.
Yes. No, I'm just saying, I'm actually not sure I want to vote on this. I don't know what the new surfacing is, the thirty thousand one is, or if that's a reasonable cost.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six thousand one, or it's a reasonable cost. And yeah, I'm just saying to vote on it, I don't think we're going to vote on it.
It is the recommendation of your facilities manager, despite what councillor Joe gives.
Okay, which order should we take it to vote?
At the moment, your amendment is councillor Dean Evans's, especially to see other quotes for a crushed stone service.
Okay, so we're voting on that. All those in favour of supporting that proposal?
Which one?
Two. Councillor Evans, four.
Against?
Amendment. So then you return to your substantive motion?
My substantive motion is that we suspend standing orders. Are we agreeing to suspend?
This is the Enviro Pain option, using your SIL fund.
So agreeing to spend thirty-six from the SIL fund to put in the surface that was recommended to us by our services manager?
No guarantee.
Yeah, no guarantee.
No guarantee, sorry, sir.
With councillor Evans's amendment to request a guarantee.
All those in favour?
Can we record the parents of this here? Five, seven, eight, that's eight.
Councillor Evans, five, two, three. Can we do that again? A big show of hands?
This is the substantive motion, to resurface the car park.
Now, hang on, sorry, you said we resurfaced the car park. A lot of us will agree with that statement.
We all know, we all know what the proposal was, okay? We know what the proposal was, councillor Robinson. That's what we are voting on. Okay, can I have a show of hands to people who support that proposal, please? Thank you.
Nine.
I'm really sorry, because I've been away, I have no real understanding of the backstory here about which services you're talking about, which is why I'm not going to, like, it's all fictional language.
Which goes first?
Sorry, you don't want to just give me substantive.
And there's against, please.
Three, four, five. Councillor, there's a crossroads.
Thank you. Right, number twenty-two, exclusion of press.
I know, I've got another item.
Finish it.
Again, so this is one that I've sent the councillors, this is the code of conduct review. Cornwall councillors are reviewing its code of conduct. Obviously, from our previous discussion, we use that code, that's our code. The town parishes throughout Cornwall use that code as well. That ensures a uniform standard of conduct for all councils and councillors. From our recent experiences of the code and the code findings and the recommendations to this council, we know that's not ideal and that's around the censure of councillors for behaviour. My intention is to respond to this consultation on that basis. Obviously, I'll bring in members to make their own responses individually if they like to or if you want to add to the corporate response.
Any one of you need some?
I've got a view.
Councillor Evans?
I've got a view on this. I think every councillor, once a councillor, should show respect and realise why they're a councillor. And when you come in here, you listen to people, you all have different views around the table. But when you leave the chamber and we voted on it, it becomes a council decision. And then those people that go off and start spouting off that, I didn't support it, I didn't do this, I didn't do that. They did because it's a council decision, they're part of the council. Code of conduct is respect for everybody. You read that out at the start of the meeting, that's what it should be.
On councillor Evans's point, our code does cover that, that's about corporate responsibility. Once the council makes a decision, that's your decision as a councillor, whether you voted for it or not.
That actually came with the code of conduct training as well from Sarah at Cal. No views?
I obviously do have views, but can I share them with your confidential mark?
Yes. I think the response incorporates some of your views anyway. Yeah, please do.
Councillor Williams?
No, let's just make, councillors, no, that response is being made and please inform that if you can.
Great. Thank you. Is that all further than us?
No. Sorry, what I should have said, councillors, is Hannah's outside me today. Hannah's our new admin assistant. I'm giving her a taste of... That's business.
I've survived a month, I'm eating cocktails.
She's just put her notes in.
It is also...
Dry hair, I should know.
Exclusion of press and public.